Good evening, everyone. Hello? Better? Okay. So, we're reconvening after closed session. Roll call, please, Sally.
Trustee McAvoy.
Present.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Trustee Lawson. Vice President Marcus.
Here.
President Diaz-Locum.
Present. So, reporting out of closed session, we received information from staff and no action was taken. So, welcome, everybody. Those of you in person, it's great to see you. Thank you for coming this evening. If you'd like to speak to the board, please complete a card and pass it over here to Eliana. If you're at home, please fill out the Google Doc. See if you could please turn off your electronic devices. That would be great. Also, all consent items are voting all at once, so if you want anything on there, please let us know so that we can pull it off and not vote on it. So, do we have any changes or additions, deletions, modifications to the agenda this evening?
There is definitely, under consent, 11.5 is being pulled entirely. And...
11.5?
Yes, we're just pulling that.
Okay.
Because we have it under as an action item. It doesn't need to be in two places.
Okay. Any other changes? No? And I have a motion to approve the agenda? Samo?
Second.
Okay, since Elisa's not here, roll call for the vote, please, Sally.
Trustee McAvoy.
Yes.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson. Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locum.
Aye. Do we have any oral communications this evening?
We do not.
Okay. Let's move on to... Okay. The bond item consent, the bond program consent items. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, roll call for the vote, Ellie.
Trustee McAvoy.
Yes, aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson. Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locum.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm still getting used to these mics. So, let's continue. The consent items, items 11.1 to 11.4, 11.5 was pulled. Can I have a motion to move those items?
So moved, or maybe someone else did.
Roll call, Ellie.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson. Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locum.
Aye. Okay, on to action items. 12.1, recommendation regarding approval of the Second Amendment to the agreement with One Life Counseling Service for 2021-22.
So, this item is before you tonight because we had to do a little bit of... My light here is on. Can you hear me? So, this is being brought to you tonight because we had to do a little bit of restructuring in regard to the counseling services. Star Vista was working at a lot of our school sites, but during the time of returning and creating the contracts with them, they were unable to find some of the counselors that they wanted to use on the school sites. So, that's the reason why we're now going to One Life Counseling. And so, that's the reason for the amendment that you'll see here tonight. And so, it's in the amount of the $5,400, which is paid by Al the one to Selby, which was going to go to Star Vista, but now is going to be going to One Life because they have the counseling services for them. Any questions?
Okay, can I have a motion to move this item? Hello?
I'll second.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locum.
Aye. Moving on, 12.2, recommendation regarding classified general leave request.
Thank you. In this particular leave request, we are asking the board not to approve the classified general leave request because we are unable to fill a very hard-to-fill position with the employee being on leave. So, there are other options for the employee at the end of the year to return, but in this case, the recommendation is not to approve.
Any questions or comments before we move this item? No? Can I have a motion to move this item? Samo?
Second.
Roll call, Ellie.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locum.
Aye. There's a question for us on the chat. Maybe it's the question and answer, I don't know. He takes care of that. So, the answer to your question is yes. Mr. Calvin Chian. 12.3, oh wait. Did we finish voting? Yes.
Now we're on 12.3.
The chat always disrupts me. 12.3, recommendation regarding approval of instructional calendar for 2022-23 school year. And it comes.
Go ahead. This one say before you tonight are the preschool calendars for 208, the 185-day program and the TK through 8th grade instructional program with a student start date of Wednesday, August 17. These spring break does align with the Sequoia Union High School District, so we are thrilled to be able to do that. And all work calendars have been negotiated with both unions.
Can I, I just want to clarify, Wendy, because the last time we talked about it, we were thinking it was going to align, so that's confirmed that it's aligned now.
Yeah, yes, I was able to get confirmation from the new Assistant Superintendent at Sequoia.
Any other comments or questions? No? I just want to say thank you, Wendy, for getting this done. Normally, we have to wait a long time. With that, can I have a motion to move this item, please?
So moved.
Second. Roll call, Ellie.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locum.
Aye. Moving on to item 12.4, recommendation regarding adoption of Resolution 26, determination of order of employment for certificated employees for elimination of or risk reduction in particular kind of service for fiscal year 2021-2022.
Thank you. Just noticed an error and that should be for 2022-23. Okay, so, this particular resolution is brought to the board every February in anticipation, or in the case where there is a layoff, and so when we need to look at, in this case, credential teachers to determine the seniority for a layoff in anticipation for the following school year, then we will refer to the criteria that's listed on the document attached. So, this is an annual notification to the board as well.
Then Wendy, can you just remind me of the, the, the unions are involved in the seniority, they check it. I know that there's a way for people to come and say the seniority was wrong and corrected, but can you just sort of refresh our memory on that?
Oh, absolutely. So, the board took action on the seniority lists, I believe, in January. And prior to that, there is a comprehensive communication out to employees for them to check all of the details are accurate and to verify their seniority point on the list. And then, once all of those issues are resolved and everything's been checked, then it's brought to the board for approval in January. The skipping criteria is what it's named, is to really ensure that those that have specialized credentials are essentially skipped in a layoff.
Okay, Annie.
I'll make a motion to approve. So, Janet, can you use your microphone, please?
Elisa, you can't hear Janet?
I could hear you, John, but I couldn't hear Janet when she was speaking. I've been able to hear other people. Elisa, can you hear me? Yeah, the, I mean, I want to hear you, but also the audience wants to hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, now what was my question?
You had the 21.
I just wanted to make sure that the resolution itself was correct with the 21-22 school year on it. There's just a typo in the board memo that it should be for the fiscal year 22, no?
I can clarify, sorry, Janet. So, the memo is correct, the resolution's correct, but it's in anticipation for layoffs for positions that we would have normally had in existence for 22-23. So, all, everything is correct on the memo and on the resolutions, but I wanted the board to know was for the, for reductions that would be affected in the 22-23 school year.
Got it.
We're not laying off anybody in March and then their position ceases to exist in March. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Elisa, I think you were making a motion?
Yeah, sorry. Didn't mean to overstep Janet on top of you with the comment. Anyway, yes, I made a motion for that.
A second.
Roll call, Ellie.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locum.
Aye. Well, now it's 12.5, recommendation regarding second reading and approval of Board Policy 51-16.1, inter-district open enrollment.
And I believe we have, both of our board members who serve on that committee would like to make a statement prior to anything moving forward.
Yeah, hi. Can you all hear me okay? Yeah, okay, great. So, Janet Lawson and I are the board policy along with Wendy Kelly, and we invited Dr. John Baker to join us for this one because he had a particular interest in this particular policy. And so, as a result of new information that's come in in the last week, along with all the comments that we've received, many of which, you know, we definitely want to think about and explore further. So, we had a board policy committee yesterday morning, and our committee would like to recommend that we pull this item for now. We put a pause on this particular policy. And we proposed waiting for several reasons. First of all, we have a North Star Forward Committee that is currently working on coming up with recommendations for North Star and impacts in our district, as well as opportunities and all of that. So, we'd like to let that process go forward. We have a community process, as most of you all know, with representation from various schools and parents and staff. And so, we'll have recommendations out of that committee that could impact this policy. Also, the timing on this particular policy is not ideal, given the enrollment process and where we're at. So, for that reason, it also makes sense, in our opinion. And then finally, as I mentioned previously, the board members and Dr. Baker, we've gotten a number of comments from parents. And we'd like to more fully explore the various comments and potentially unintended consequences of this policy. And again, just by kind of making sure we're fully cap, we're fully thinking about everything. And so, with all of that, we believe a pause would be a good idea and that we would bring this policy forward once we have more information from the various, you know, areas I spoke of, the committee, as well as the comments. And getting more data, actually, we've also gotten some additional data. So, we bring it back most likely towards the end of the school year. So, Dr. Baker, I think you were saying, you know, that would probably be May or June, it just depends on how quickly the North Star Forward finishes their work, their important work. So, that's a recommendation. And we did look at the policy just to see if there were any issues, you know, other, because there's other parts of the policy, not just the schools of choice piece. And we did think about whether to bring forward some of it, and we just decided, instead of doing it piecemeal, let's just do it all at once later in the school year. And then, that would go into effect for the following enrollment process, which would then be for the following year, if that makes sense. So, Janet, I don't know if you'd like to add anything. I know you and I spoke extensively yesterday about this.
No, I think you covered everything. Thank you.
Okay. So, anyway, that's our recommendation board that we would like to just put a pause on it. I believe there was a lot of comments that came in, so, Madam President, you can decide how we want to handle that, but I'll kind of put that out there for reaction from our other colleagues who, because of the Brown Act, we're not able to talk to, so they, this is a surprise for them that we're bringing this recommendation forward.
Okay, so, since we have people in the audience and at home, do you want to hear from them? Because I think it would be helpful to hear what they have to say.
I think so. Also, I think we, do we, can we, can we just not vote? I mean, do we have to vote to postpone it, or I kind of...
We just would have...
I think it's just a no action.
If nobody makes a motion, then it doesn't go forward.
Right, it doesn't go forward, it's no action. It's similar to if we had pulled it and wanted to bring it back. It's in the same vein.
Yeah.
I think part of it for the community too, we wanted to bring this up right away before comments. I do agree that it would be useful to hear the comments, since people probably are ready to go, and it would add to the emails that we've already received, and that can kind of go into, you know, our list of thinking. But I did want to let, you know, anyone who comments know that that's the recommendation, the board policy. So, it might be useful for, you know, the board, if, well, whatever, you can decide. I'll let you decide, Maria, thank you.
Well, you're part of it too. I mean, you know, just because you're not physically here doesn't mean we don't consider your opinion as well, so. I just thought it would be helpful to hear some of their concerns, maybe something new to consider while you guys are reviewing the policy later on. That's my thinking, so. Okay, okay.
So, there are 24 comments, so...
We take the ones here first.
We'll take who's here first.
If there's anyone here.
And then, we'll see others if they want to still, you know. Ellie has them all listed here, so. And that's three minutes. Go, go ahead.
Yeah, I might just mention, I mean, they may all want to still speak, but given that there's 24 times three minutes, that's, that's, that's a long time. So, maybe we can encourage people that if somebody has said something similar to what they're going to say before them, they could say ditto. We, you know, we've done that in the past. Also, if you've sent us an email, we, you know, we all got the emails, and I know we're reading those, and those will definitely add to our conversation. So, anyway, just to kind of expedite things. With that said, I do agree, it would be really nice to hear from those who are ready to comment to us. Thank you.
Okay, so, Ellie, you called the first person here? David Weekly?
Test, test? It sounds like it's on. Great, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, trustees of the district and district staff, thank you. Thank you for a moment to speak on this issue concerning schools of choice in Redwood City. I'm really grateful that it sounds like our comments are being heard, so thank you for that. That's really important. Let me be clear on my input. Restricting parent choice is going to hurt students, and it's also going to hurt the district. I'm passionate about this district. My wife Rebecca and I attended our first meeting here when she was pregnant with our eldest son Maxwell. And she went on to go and help co-chair the Measure T campaign, which raised nearly $300 million for our public school facilities. I now have two sons in this district. Maxwell's a first grader in the Mandarin immersion program, and Cyrus is going to be joining the Mandarin immersion program as a kindergartner in the fall. I've taken on the role of treasurer of the school's PTO, Starship Orion. I've cleaned up their books, introduced automation. We have a lot vested in the success of the immersion program. Neither Rebecca or I speak Mandarin at home, so when we were choosing the best schools for our kids, we were concerned about our ability to support them at home, learning a language that we didn't know. And something that helped to give us the courage to try this was knowing that our kids would have options if things didn't work out. We're excited about MI, and it's important to us to have options, so that we can be confident that the schools that we pick for our kids are the right schools for them and remain the right schools for them. So, you can imagine our shock when we found out that the district was planning to take away options for our kids. That because we were bold enough to be willing to try Mandarin immersion, that we would be punished by being unable to select alternate options if something wouldn't work out for our kids. I understand that there's a potential for an appeal to permit a transfer, but it sends a clear signal that that is not a welcome choice. Parents need choices to ensure that we can optimize for our children's emotional, physical, and mental needs. As I'm sure you're all aware, North Star's admissions begin at third grade. If the district is to move forward with removing transfer options, this puts district parents like us in the nearly impossible position of deciding in January whether their four- or five-year-old entering kindergarten that fall might ever want to be a third grader at North Star, some four years hence. That's madness. I'm sure there's a motivating thought here, that the district wants to help protect our programs like Mandarin immersion. And it's awesome to see the level of motivation to ensure that the program is a success. We welcome that energy. It's what has made these programs possible. And it's true that some students in MI have left the program to transfer to North Star in third grade. And it's true that that is damaging to the remaining students and to the program. We want to stop the bleeding. I get it. But the way to fix that isn't to lock the doors of the school. It's continuing to invest in the quality of our programs to make them objectively the right choice for parents. Now, it's true, the short term, locking parents into a school that turns out to not be the best fit for their kid can temporarily... can temporarily increase retention rates in the same way that locking hotel guests into their rooms will increase occupancy rates. But that's not a good plan for a hotel and it's not a good plan for our district. Not only does this harm children by preventing them from getting placed in the right school for them, it harms the district by sending a clear signal that the district doesn't care about the best options for your kids. And that if you dare to pick a school of choice of any kind in kindergarten, you won't be permitted another option if it doesn't work out. In scaring off prospective parents, I have no doubt that this will long-term reduce enrollment in programs like Mandarin immersion. If you want to help these programs to thrive long-term, they're going to need ongoing support in being objectively amazing, which they are. And a gotcha clause that prohibits transfers is not objectively amazing. It's terrifying. Let me be clear. I'm tremendously proud of our Mandarin immersion program. It is an amazing offering. Max is chatting up a storm in the language and our plan is to have him continue with the program all the way through. But our family would never have taken such a large leap if we knew that other options would end up close for us. Thank you.
You have three minutes. So if I interrupt you and say your time is up, if you would please just acknowledge that, I'd really appreciate it. All right. Let's see who's here first. Yeah, we agreed to take who's here first. You both signed up names? Connie Kwan and Eric Lu. Okay, Eric, come on up. There are three minutes.
Hello, I'm Eric Lu. Thank you, everyone, for all the work you do. You guys are awesome. I will try not to take too much of your time. But basically, I moved to Redwood City about seven years ago, in large part because of the diverse community here. And rather than go to like Menlo Park, Palo Alto, I really felt like as a Chinese-American, I felt welcome here. And when my daughter entered kindergarten, I was thrilled that she could be part of my heritage and go to Mandarin immersion. It was really a great thing for us. And at that time, of course, North Star isn't a choice in kindergarten, right? And North Star is a great school, right? It's a great jewel. And it's great that everyone has not a right to go to North Star, but a right to try to go to North Star, right, to compete, to, to work hard to enter it. And when I first heard about the proposal to bar students from Mandarin immersion, Adelante and others from being able to enter North Star, I was thinking about how I would explain to my daughter that she doesn't get to try to get into North Star because she's in Mandarin immersion. And like for the people who wrote this proposal, I believe in their good intentions. I believe that it is not their intention, but for the first time in my years at Redwood City, when I heard about this, I really felt discriminated against. It felt that like as an Asian American, I was being told like, hey, we're not allowed to apply to something. And sorry. I know this is not Redwood City's intent, but it's how I feel. And I believe I'm probably not alone in this. So, you know, I know there's problems, but I believe there must be a better way to solve these problems. One that does not sacrifice our values and our values to commitment to diversity and to equality. Thank you.
Connie Kwan. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for allowing parents to express their opinions on this matter. I have a daughter who is in Mandarin immersion right now and she's in grade one. And I want to talk about possible unintended consequences of this policy, which is that with a child in grade one, I have a choice in grade two of whether if we want to go for, for her to test for North Star, I would have to actually pull her out of the Mandarin immersion program, put her in a private school for one year, just so she could have a chance of potentially going to North Star. And that is a really tough choice for a parent to have to make because she has made friends in grade one and we love the program and we love the teachers and we want to support that program. However, it is very tough to be told that you cannot compete to get a chance to go to the, one of the best schools in the district. And so I feel like this policy unfairly penalized parents who are now have to take, make this tough choice of staying with the program or, or having to choose a different path. And so I would like for you to consider this dilemma that the parents might be put in. I do understand that, you know, the, the proposal is meant to, there are definitely benefits to the proposal. But I feel like, you know, the, the program starting at grade three is just a really tough because it doesn't line up with the other programs. And I would like to ask that the committee thinks through other ways of solving for the attrition issue. Thank you.
Your name?
Peter Cowan.
Hello. Thank you for all taking the time to listen. I have two children. I have a daughter who is a kinder at the Mandarin immersion program and I have a, a son who is currently registered for the TK Mandarin program. I think one potential consequence of this is, should I choose for a different route for my son, who's a very different child than my daughter? He may not be able to go to TK as I understand TK is fully enrolled at the moment. So should I turn down the slot that we've already accepted? Which brings me to a point about the timing of this proposal and how it was sort of rolled out at the exact same time that parents are making decisions about what schools to go to and the potential binds so that it puts us in. And then I think it also, it seems that the issue is really about a cliff around third grade in the Mandarin program and potentially in the Spanish immersion program as well. And I think this proposal is something of a Band-Aid to try and address that. But I would really encourage the, the board, regardless of what decisions you make on this proposal or a similar one, to really think about what the fundamental problem you're trying to solve is and continue to work towards that in solving the fundamental issues, as this is a, more of an indication of, of a problem than the problem in and of itself. I think that there are also opportunities for the, the board to consider a less aggressive policy, I would say. My son is currently in a Spanish immersion pre-K program. His daughter or his sister is loving Mandarin, or that's why we enrolled him in TK Mandarin. If it's not the right fit for him, there are two great choice programs in Redwood City. That would be another great fit for him, which is the Spanish immersion program, which presumably could test into in at least the next couple of years. And the program that's right at the same campus as his sister attends at Orion, the parent co-op. And now this policy makes some allowance for the superintendent to allow cases like that. And my presumption is that since those I do not think are the problem, they would probably be readily allowed. However, the proposal as written really only indicates situations of violence or bullying as, as being applicable. So. And then I just, one quick note on governance. In the materials, it said there was an unspoken rule that parents are committing to a program. I attended every choice program in 19, in 2019 on a visit. I never heard such an unspoken rule. And transparency in our public institutions requires that we do not have unspoken rules. Thank you.
What we'll do is, Roger, I need to ask you a question. So the others are members, I would assume, of the audience. And so we would need to say their name and then you would then allow, okay. So let's see, who's the first one I'll help. Can I make a procedural suggestion that we announce the next person too, so that they're ready to unmute them faster? If we do them two at a time, then they can be finding the second person. Thanks.
So the next speaker is Dennis Lee, followed by Michelle Shu.
I see Dennis Lee on here. Michelle has, okay. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Dennis Lee and I'm the parent of a rising kindergartner in the district. Eight years ago, when my wife and I moved into the district, we knew very little about the schools in the district since we didn't have kids. After our son was born, we started looking at the options and we were thrilled to learn that our public schools had a Mandarin immersion program. As Mandarin speakers, the opportunity for our son to learn a language and culture we grew, we both grew up in seemed perfect. I started meeting more parents from the program and even felt inspired enough to help a group of them bring a Mandarin immersion preschool provider to Orion's campus a few years ago. About two weeks ago, we were notified that our son had gotten a spot in the MI kindergartner program. And we were very excited. It felt like things were really coming together. And then 10 days later, I got an email about this policy that the board is considering voting on and it felt a little like a punch to the gut. Every time we have to make a decision on behalf of our son, like what preschool we send him to, what activities we sign him up for, or even what, where we send him to kindergarten, there's a level of anxiety whether, about whether we're making the right choice. If the board follows through on this policy, I can tell you as a parent that's in the midst of trying to make a decision about where to send him for school this year, you are raising the stakes and forcing us to make a very difficult decision. What this policy is asking parents to do is predict what's going to be best for their child for the next five to six years and limiting the options if that choice ends up not being the right one. I think advocates for this policy change will say that it's designed to protect the different choice programs. But I hope everyone can see the irony that it does so by denying parents the right to make certain future choices for their children as their situations change. It's not a secret that some of the choice programs have suffered from attrition as students tested in North Star Academy. And this policy change seems to be targeted to prevent students who, parents who choose to start in one choice program to make the switch to that program later on. At the same time, it may reward or give preference to parents who choose to send their children to private school for the first few years of elementary school. While I, I understand the intention of this policy, it seems misguided, has some pretty serious flaws in it. And at best, it seems like a Band-Aid solution to a bigger problem. Rather than try to limit or punish parents of other choice programs, I urge the board to take a hard look at the admissions policy for North Star Academy and look for options to conduct admissions in a more equitable way that doesn't lock out different subgroups of parents and students. The last thing I'll say is that I can appreciate how difficult it is to craft policies that will affect thousands of students. Because I myself have crafted, helped craft these types of policies when I was working as a school district administrator in San Jose. Please spend more time researching the issue, listen and engage with parents and the broader community to find a better solution than the one that was proposed today. Thank you.
And now we have, it's Michelle Shu.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank you for giving the time to share our feedback. Now, I'm not going to repeat the things that other parents already had said that I share in common. But I would like to echo on, go deeper understanding the issue. Both North Star and Mandarin immersion are great program in our community. I think the, the issue here is that they're not being set up to success on the fair ground. Given North Star start at grade three and North Star is take, is looking at the tests that everyone take and approach parents and students who had the highest score. I think the issue here is that North Star and Mandarin immersion are not being set up on the fair ground to compete with. I also agree the policy right now is trying to make a patch on a deeper issue. So I really encourage the committee to look into the equality issue with how North Star admission process is to make it more fair and that allow other program to strive and not putting the burden on the parents who had to make a decision early on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dan Priven Troncoso, followed by Jennifer Barnett.
They've already spoken, each of them already spoken. Oh, if, if, thank you. Ellie, do you want to say the name again?
Dan Priven Troncoso.
If you're in the audience, would you raise your hand so we can see you and unmute you? Move on to, who's the next one?
Jennifer Barnett.
Oh, Jennifer just raised your hand. Okay.
Hello, can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Jennifer Barnett. My daughter goes to Mandarin immersion, the kindergarten class. And I'd like to say that I am deeply disappointed by this new policy. It is extremely short-sighted and uniquely focused on alienating the very people needed for school of choice to succeed. Forcing parents to be loyal to a single program at the expense of their child is not only absurd, but will not increase enrollment, especially in more unique programs. This policy will only increase inequity without addressing the actual cause of it. I agree that there is a serious need to address the exodus to North Star, but this is not the way to fix it. There have been several suggestions of alternate solutions put forth that should be pursued rather than this one. Either intentionally or unintentionally, prioritizing private school students will not get the results the school board is looking for. This policy will only encourage parents to put their children in private schools. And I am concerned that it will essentially turn North Star into a publicly funded private school. It is already a concerningly insular program with questionable merits. I have to ask, why is it allowed to cause such havoc in the school district? Why aren't its own problematic issues being addressed instead of this policy? Which seems punishing to the rest of the school district for North Star's bad behavior. It is upsetting that the North School, it is upsetting that the school district would have such a knee-jerk reaction to an issue that has been ongoing for quite some time. This is a Band-Aid to stop a hemorrhage. I like the program my daughter is in. I want it to succeed, but this will not help her succeed, nor will it help the program succeed. Please do not pass this policy. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Diana Chang and she indicated on our speaker's card that she could not attend the meeting. So she wants one of us to read her speaker's card. After Diana's, Alvin Xian. So Diana's card resets follow. I cannot attend the board meeting, but I would like to submit this card for comment. I am opposed to the board's proposal to restrict subsequent enrollment to another non-boundary school if a student has already been previously enrolled in a different non-boundary school. This seems unnecessarily restrictive and I'm not sure what goal the school board is attempting to accomplish with this policy. As some of the non-boundary schools started enrollment in kindergarten, this policy, if enacted, would severely limit the choices available for a student discovered that their first enrolled school of choice did not meet their learning needs. They would be barred from enrolling in a different school of choice that might better suit them simply because they have made a mistake the first time. As a parent, this is a terrifying burden to carry. We're trying to do what's best for our children, but we're often making choices from a position of ignorance, particularly for our firstborn children, given our lack of prior experience in navigating the nuances of school choice. If the rationale for such a limitation is that enrollment into a non-bound, non, non-boundary school is a privilege, they can only be extended once per child. I think there are better ways to distribute opportunities equally to all students in the district than to arbitrarily limit future choices. I hope the board will carefully consider their objective and assess whether this is the best and most rational way to achieve that objective.
Okay, the next one is Alvin. I think Alvin has his hand up.
Hey, guys. So I'll go ahead and share anyways because my son is in the parent participation program. So that's maybe a slightly different perspective. So my, my son is a current kindergartner. And I have to admit that last year when we were deciding which school to send our kid, child to, he definitely agonized over the decision. If our neighborhood school was rated eight or higher on gradeschools.com, we, we wouldn't have thought twice about enrolling there. But unfortunately, that wasn't the case. We considered private schools or moving, but we ultimately decided on Orion because we believe that strong parental involvement could, could be more important than just the test scores. And admittedly, the priority that North Star gives to intra-district transfers definitely did incentivize us to choose a public school. And I believe that in limiting that incentive would push more like-minded families out of the Redwood City School District. So now you're probably thinking that people like me that are thinking of jumping ship to North Star are precisely the reason why we're having this vote. So that our schools of choice are not negatively impacted by North Star. Well, since joining Orion, we've been very happy with our experience here. We've loved the parental involvement, the presence of high-achieving kids who can challenge my son to improve and the low student to teacher ratio. But even if we decide to stay, I'm actually just as worried as you all are that we will lose students in the third grade, forcing us to consolidate our two classes with a great student teacher ratio into one large 30-student classroom. into one large 30 student classroom. So I did think, I did try to think of some solutions to address the, you know, the North Star issue, but I, I didn't know that there was already a North Star Forward Committee going on. So, yeah, I won't go into that. Yeah, but in short, just, I, I feel like we, we could scale back the North Star program, maybe replace the grades three through five in North Star with, by replacing that with some, the pockets of that North Star culture within each school and offering maybe like advanced coursework programs at each school. So instead of having these academic tracks at the school level, which we do now, we push those tracks down to the classroom or the pod level, where mobility between groups will be easier and we can have more school diversity than what we see at North Star. Yeah, so that's it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Eric Garcia. He cannot attend the meeting, but he submitted a comment. After Eric Garcia is Daniel Dobbs. The proposed policy does nothing to democratize access to your educational programs for Redwood City parents. In fact, it takes a giant leap backwards by removing parents' ability to choose what's best for their children's dynamic educational needs. How can a parent choose the right school at age five without knowing how their child's needs may change in the years to come? This policy is prioritizing the desires of school administrators attempting to resolve intra-district transfers issues over what should be our top priority, giving children access to quality educational programs. This is where the focus should be. If some schools are suffering loss due to transfers, then empower those schools to make their programs the best they can. This is a poor stopgap measure that does nothing but hurt other students. Daniel Dobbs is next.
I don't see Daniel on here.
Christina Jade Lee Simmons.
I saw that.
Followed by Kyle Zipes.
Someone raise your hands. There's.
Hello?
Yeah, it's Christina Jade. Go ahead.
Yes. Hello. Thank you guys for serving. I've thought many times over the last two years that it must be so hard to be on a school board right now. So thank you. Glad that you're taking a step back and taking some time to rethink these policies. And I hope that with this time, the Redwood School District will try to fix some problems that have plagued us for a long time and will continue to plague us until we, we really fix them. I think that it's, it's 2022 this year, and if we've learned anything over the last two years, it is that we need to do whatever it takes to stamp out structural inequalities in our society, and especially in our educational systems. So research has shown that what we call is gifted has more to do with how much money a kid has than anything else. And our own data shows that North Star is the least integrated school in our school district. Children from rich families are getting in, children from poor families are not. 90% of Hoover kids and 90% of Garfield kids are economically disadvantaged. Only 6% of North Star students are, are economically disadvantaged. Almost all the other school districts nearby have dropped this gifted model because it perpetuates inequity. And I'm, I'm just really curious of why our school district is still perpetuating inequality with the current setup with North Star. North Star's third grade is, start time is causing the problems for all the elementary schools, other elementary schools in our district, and that's the whole reason why we're all sitting here. So, you know, now that we are taking a step back, I hope that the school district will consider starting North Star in sixth grade so it can add to the district's offerings without damaging the other elementary schools. And I hope that we can repurpose the resources to provide more enrichment at every elementary school. Just like the last speaker said, I think that's a great idea. I think everyone should have opportunities for advancement, and it's actually better for our kids that they can slide in and out of that through elementary school. You know, not meet marked as gifted sometimes and as, as far behind, because kids, you know, I have a five-year-old and a three-year-old, and they grow and change every month. I, I don't think we should mark them that early. So I know this is a big change and it won't be easy, but I think it is really time for our whole school district to, to right decades of wrong and strengthen all of our public schools together. On a separate note, and related, I listened to the meeting you guys had on the ninth, and I know that one of the idea was to let students or families petition the superintendent.
Excuse, your time is up. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry. That was three minutes.
Next speaker.
If, if they're sending in the note, could you perhaps send that to the board members? Or leave them till the very end, so we can hear from the people who are present?
So do we have any more to have? No.
No, okay.
I think it was Kyle.
Kyle Zipes, followed by Brian Hicks.
Hi, thanks, everybody. Thank you, board. I appreciate your time, and I appreciate you listening to our comments and considering them. I appreciate you also agreeing to postpone this policy while you further study the unintended consequences of it. And I also want to thank the other parents who've come to speak tonight. I appreciate you guys taking the time out of your lives to try to fight against this policy. I have a kindergartner at the Mandarin immersion program, and I have another child that I expect to follow in two years. I, I want the Mandarin immersion program to succeed. I, I, I serve on the budget committee as of recently, so I'm dedicating my time to its success. And I also understand the problem that you're trying to solve. I agree it is a problem that there's significant attrition at schools of choice. And it's hard when kids leave midstream. But the current proposal, as many parents have said, is going to create more and worse problems than you're trying to solve with this policy. So many parents have mentioned some of the problems tonight. I'll reiterate the ones I think are most important. First, I, I think it's bad for the district. By depriving our kids of other choices, it's going to force the ones who want to change for whatever reason, whether social reasons or they want a, a better educational experience for them. It's going to force the ones who can afford it to private school, and the ones who cannot afford it will be stuck. So I, I think that's, it's going to harm your funding, and I also think it's going to harm equity by forcing low-income parents to be stuck to schools they don't want. And I, I personally think we should be trying as a district to avoid funneling families to private school. I don't think we should be trying to push them towards it, which this policy will do. I, I think it's also unbalanced, going to harm schools of choice in the end, not, not help them. Because I think families will be reluctant to try them in the first place for fear of being locked in for so long. And then it, it's just not fair. It's not fair that our kids lose a chance to attend what seems to be the best school in the district. It's not fair that our neighbors who send their kids to neighborhood schools will have this choice, and we don't, through no fault of our own. And it's especially not fair to make this policy change now after we've already decided to send our kid to a school. Had we known of this policy, we might have made a separate choice at the beginning. It, it seems to me, as other parents have mentioned, that the easiest solution is to delay North Star until grade six, when there's a natural break anyway in elementary schools, but if that solution is not palatable to you, then I would hope that you would find another solution that doesn't create more and worse problems than the one it's trying to solve. Thank you.
Brian Hicks, followed by Olivia Ma.
Hello.
Go ahead.
Thank you, members of the board, for listening to us tonight. This proposal has been communicated as the formalization of an unwritten rule in a longstanding school of choice transfer process. As a parent with kids in school of choice, this is surprising terminology because it's backwards from reality. Actually, the unwritten rule in the longstanding process is that families can move between school of choice programs. And many families have done this over the years, in particular, as has been described when moving to North Star for the third grade. Parents have done this time and time again without ever being informed that this violates some kind of edict. How can there be two unwritten rules regarding the school of choice transfer process that are polar opposites of each other? This kind of discrepancy implies the administration's viewpoint is out of sync with the understanding and the needs of the parents. Parents want to make informed choices throughout the path of their child's development. And for years, school of choice has provided this option for families to match a school to their child's unique abilities with no strings attached. This proposal does away with the flexibility that has long been expected within school of choice. I'm glad you will be delaying this decision and listening to parents about why they sometimes switch school of choice programs. It may be enlightening to learn that it is less about a burning desire to join North Star and more about finding ways to best navigate the choppy waters of Redwood City Middle Schools. Let's address the real problem with an appropriate solution, rather than using the removal of choice from within school of choice as some blunt instrument to handshackle kids into attending Kennedy instead of North Star. And certainly, let's not rush this proposal under the false moniker of a formalization of some unwritten rule. However, even if the board decides to move forward to this concept later, let's not apply changes retroactively to families already committed to these programs for this coming school year. Simply put, rules not presented to parents at the start of this enrollment process should not be enforced until a later enrollment class. This is the Bay Area. For all kinds of things, and especially for school-related things, parents plan far in advance to secure placement in programs for their children. This proposal comes much too late in the year to have it applied to incoming kindergarteners. Nobody knew there'd be a requirement to lock into a single school of choice program from K through eight, and this info, had it been delivered back in August, would have altered plans made for the school year. This is now, there is now no time to shift to another quality program. Wait lists are long. So I hope the district will continue to honor the rules in place the time we accepted enrollment into school of choice, which it seems like there's a tendency to do here. And thank you for that. Lastly, I request that siblings of students already within the system be exempted from the new transfer restrictions imposed by this proposal. So the families who had long banked on having choice within school of choice can retain the flexibility of grouping their children together within the same campus. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Olivia Ma, followed by Christine Liu.
Christina, it was, what was it? I, I don't see a Ma. Do you see a Ma? No, I don't see one either.
Simbuda Shakrab, Shakrab Gordy. Jen Ben Sario. El Colacar.
El Colacar, is that what it is? All right, there it is. El Colacar, there. Whoops, there it is.
Hi. Please do not continue forward with your proposal to make families commit to a school of choice for all six years of K through five. This is not an equitable decision. It isn't fair for students, and it will harm programs, especially Orion's parent participation. Please instead consider spending resources on making the neighborhood schools a more attractive option for all families. Pouring into our neighborhood schools is beneficial for all families and reduces the desire to attend different schools. I am the parent of two current North Star students and one Clifford TK student who will attend Orion's parent participation program in the fall for kindergarten. Both my older two children attended Orion K through two. The reason we attended Orion in the first place is because Taft, our neighborhood school, is not a good fit for our family. Resources at the Bayside Schools are primarily spent serving community needs, not the education of the students. Additional resources to these schools would improve the education component, making them more attractive for all families and leading to more diverse communities as families are willing to attend neighborhood schools. However, forcing students to commit to a school for all six years of K through five will mean that many families who are interested in attending North Star will attend private or charter schools for K through two. The district will lose those families that pour into their school communities, and all schools will suffer. Orion's parent participation program especially will suffer as it will lose many K through two families, and I fear it would be the end of the program. If RCSD desires truly to be a district of choice, then please continue giving students and families the choice to choose whichever school or program works best for them each year. If being a district of choice is no longer working, then please pour into the neighborhood schools that are less attractive options so that all schools can flourish and serve all the families in their neighborhoods. Thank you.
Next speaker is Keith Simmons, followed by Chin Chin Wang.
Hi, this is Keith. So pretty much everything I wanted to be said has already been said. I'm a Mandarin immersion parent. And I, I think other people have made the comments that I intended to make much more eloquently than I would about raising the stakes of putting your kid in a school of choice at, at five years old. Some of the inequity problems. I did want to call out one extra thing. So this has been said by a few other people, but I, I want to enforce it. So there was a sort of carve-out where families can petition the superintendent for exceptions to the school of choice policy. And I think these types of special exceptions can cause racial inequities. My wife's parents are immigrants. Even though they're college educated, I can tell you firsthand that there is a huge language and cultural barrier to asking the superintendent for a special exception. So I think the ultimate result of this is native-born English speakers will ask for exceptions, and many non-native-born, non-English speakers won't ever dream of doing that. So, so I would echo some earlier sentiment that we need, really need to make these policies very, very clear and pre-written, not based on special exceptions. But otherwise, again, everyone has said, most of the comments that I wanted to say, and I appreciate the board for just a really difficult job. I know this is a really nuanced issue, and thanks for listening.
Next speaker, Chin Chin Wang, followed by James Stroka.
So James put in the Q and A that, based on the postponement, he doesn't need to speak.
Hi, everyone. I am currently a parent of a kindergartner in the MI program. Thank you so much for your time. I wholeheartedly agree with everything that other people have said already. And I too are, am against the current proposal because of the reasons that have been proposed. In addition, I also want to bring up that asking parents to choose between a choice school and denying them the ability to transfer to North Star, for instance, later on, means that parents at, you know, when their child is five years older, so will have to decide which middle school potentially the child will go to. If they go to a choice school, they will be, you know, for us, for instance, will be shuttled into Kennedy Middle School versus if they go to a choice school or a non-choice school or neighborhood school, they would be able to go to either Kennedy or North Star. And having, making the parents to make that decision so early on is unfair. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Megan O'Reilly Green, followed by Elizabeth Flabel.
Hi, this is Megan, the co-president of the Orion PTO. Thanks so much for postponing this, this policy. It sounds like there's a lot of more discussion that needs to happen. Sounds like there's widespread agreement that the structure of North Star and its admin, admin, admission policies needs to change. But what I wanted to say was that I think the opinions of principals and administrators of schools of choice should weigh more heavily than parents in the district who are looking for the best or the supposed best situation for their particular child. You, you guys on the school board, you guys are here to make difficult decisions that are in the best interest of the whole district, even if they're unpopular. I guess I wanted to say I'm personally not like a huge fan of the proposed policy because more than the policy, I think the structure of North Star needs to change dramatically and somehow become equitable and mandatorily reduce the amount of resources. You know, and bright students and from good families that end up there. I think if you change North Star, you know, I agree with everything that Jade said, in a few years, all the schools in the district would be seven or eight, and you'd draw people out, out of public schools, out of private schools, and we'd be the same as, you know, San Carlos and Menlo Park. Tonight, I think you're hearing from a lot of MI parents in kindergarten and first grade who clearly want to preserve their options. But that's normal, you know, they don't. But that's normal, you know, they don't, they don't know as much as, you know, people who have been in, in MI for a while. And, you know, they say they feel passionately that this policy would damage the MI program and I, I just wanted to say I don't agree with that idea. I've spent a lot of time on your Mandarin immersion program and I don't think it will negatively affect MI or recruitment in the long term. The parents who only choose schools of choice as a stepping stone to North Star or to ensure that their children are able to get the cognitive lift to get in, it's not helpful for them to be coming. Like, we do want families that are committed to language immersion for itself. And there's a lot of families that are out there. Mandarin immersion is exploding. We have people on the waiting list if people don't want these spots. So I know it's a lot to think about, but you know, we're hearing a lot from these families who want to attend the quote unquote best school in the district. But I think it's the perception that North Star is the best school in the district that is causing this strife. And I think this is something that you guys really have to look in the mirror about. Because, you know, fundamentally, this is, you know, the existence of North Star is at odds with, you know, your mission for equity. So that being said, I know it's a difficult decision and a difficult thing to wrestle with and I appreciate all you guys for all that you do. Thank you.
Next speaker, Elizabeth Fliegel, and after that would be the end of our speakers cards.
Hi, thank you for, for having us. I have two daughters in the Adelante. And some of you may, may recognize my name. I, I feel like I'm a fairly active member of the community. I did serve on the Measure T Citizens Bond Oversight Committee and I've been on the Unidos de Adelante PTO for a long time. This has actually been a very interesting and informative meeting for me. And I'd like to say I don't speak for the whole PTO. I'm sure we all have separate, separate opinions, but I do want to just give you my personal thoughts and experiences as an English speaking family coming into the school. Because in my professional life, I also promulgate regulations and I try to think really hard about unintended consequences that might come forward. And, you know, I think listening to the other parents speak, I, I'm beginning to see where that perhaps the problem you're trying to address doesn't necessarily isn't really at Adelante to begin with, but I just want to tell you that, you know, we selected Adelante five years ago. And it's hard being a parent and I didn't know whether my daughters were going to do well in the Spanish immersion program. But we live nearby and we had friends who went, so we really decided to give it a try. And to be honest, my thought process really was, well, you know, we'll just try kindergarten and if it doesn't work, we can move to some other school. And we turned out, we were, we love the school and we've been there ever since and we enrolled our second daughter. So I just wanted to give you that perspective because I will say, looking back on that decision, I don't know what I, whether we would have made the same decision if this policy had been in place and it doesn't necessarily affect us because we have no intention to transfer to North Star or any other school. But I do just wonder if there are unintended consequences that, that might factor into the decisions of incoming families. And I hope I'm wrong, but I'd like you to, you know, think about it and I don't envy your position. So good luck and thank you again for considering this.
Well, thank you, everybody, for coming to speak to us. We appreciate always listening from the community. It helps us with our decisions and our thinking. So I appreciate each and every one of you. So since we are sending this back to the committee or to work on, then there will be no action taken on this item.
Maria, can, can I say one thing?
Oh, sure.
Thank you. So I just wanted to say thank you very much for all the comments and we got emails this past couple of weeks that were very much in line with what we heard tonight. And I think just this reinforces why the committee made the recommendation to the whole board to postpone this. We have a lot more thinking to do. And the one comment I really wanted to address, because I think it's important, particularly when we talk about being an inclusive community, is I do want to make sure that it's known that it was certainly not our intention to be discriminatory and that I know we got a couple of comments on that, that that's how it felt. And they did even say that it wasn't, they didn't think it was our intention, but that's the way it came across. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we put this policy out there, we got a lot of comments, we know that we need to do better and that we need to go back to the drawing board and really take in all the feedback that we got tonight, as well as over the last couple of weeks, and then also include information from North Star. So I just, you know, I think, I know my colleagues and myself and Dr. Baker and all of our staff, we do really value inclusivity and equity. And so we have a lot to think about with this. And I just wanted to say that, you know, I, it certainly was not our intention. So thank you. Thank you, Maria, for letting me say that. Appreciate it.
Sure. Janet, did you have any comments?
I was actually just wondering if Mike or Cecilia or Maria had any further input or thoughts. Also, I know we said we wanted to postpone this, but I didn't, we haven't had, you know, we heard from people. I don't know if you had anything you wanted to say.
So I do actually, I want to, I would just, I want to thank everyone for coming in and participating in the meeting and sharing your feedback. Both people here are first time in a hybrid mode, having actual attendees participate. And of course, everybody that's on Zoom, plus the countless emails that we've gotten over the past week. I'd also say, I mean, this, even if we felt like this was the, we didn't want to postpone for any other reason. I would argue that we should postpone even just to collect more feedback. A week is not enough time for a policy to sit and be able to get people's feedback. And it does really, you know, there's a clear statement here that we, we, we need to hear the, you know, we need to let the North Star Forward Committee go forward. I mean, it's, it's really, it is going forward and we want to wait to hear for that, to be able to figure out how to do that policy. Because that committee is going to, you know, specifically focus on the Exodus in third grade. It focuses on how admission testing, you know, leads to a sense of elitism and the social emotional impact as a result of that process. And it's supposed to focus on the lack of access from students attending the Bayside Schools and seeing their recommendations out of it. Many of the people here made recommendations as well. I think will help, help inform how this policy should go. One, one voice we didn't hear from that might have been interesting to hear from would be the families that were on a waitlist and did not get into a school of choice that they wanted to, only to see that a couple of years later, after they had adjusted their, whatever they wanted to do, the families that had gotten in had gone, for whatever reason, to another school of choice. That might be a perspective that we could pull in. And I'll also point out that this, this, this change really affects a small percentage of families in the school district. It's, you know, that are in the school of choice programs and are looking for switching around. But for them, it's clear it affects them deeply. And so I think it's, it is really important to you know, get, get that perspective and understanding in there. The one other thing I would mention is that there were, there are a few parents that are rightfully concerned about what's best for their, their children. And they're, you know, if you're, if you are at all worried about Kennedy Middle School, I mean, my two daughters have thrived there. I have a, you know, a graduate from there and an eighth grader now. I'd happily talk to any parent that has come and offered their time to talk to us tonight. So I think that, you know, Mr. F is doing, Nick is doing an amazing job there. That campus is thriving, the amount of electives and the academic rigor that's there is, is great. So I just, I heard those comments and I just wanted to make sure that my opinion of the school and my experience that I got a chance to share that with all of you.
I'd like to second that too, as a Kennedy parent myself. I have a graduating eighth grader and we have been thrilled with Kennedy. And I'm happy to talk to anybody if you have questions about it going forward.
So I was going to start by saying something else, but since we're on the Kennedy, I'm also a Kennedy parent and I'm very proud of that school. I have two older adult students that graduated from Kennedy, went on and my oldest one just graduated with the master. So by all means, don't judge the book by its cover. Try it out. We do have great schools in Redwood City. We just have to give them a chance. With that said, and on this subject, I'm actually happy that we are passing on this policy because after reading all the emails, and again, as you guys know, because of the Brown Act, we are not able to talk to the other board members. I was surprised to hear that we were passing it. I was going to wait and see what the discussion was, where it was going to take us. And obviously, the common denominator here is North Star. And that is one of the things that we have to look for and look at and wait to see again what the committee is going to, you know, come up with. And so at this point, all I want to say is I'm happy we're doing this and to let all the audience, the parents know, again, we are, we are parents. Here in Redwood City, we do the best for all kids. And when we talk about inequities, as you guys know, working with the NUA, we are moving forward and we do want to make the best for all of Redwood City kids. Thank you.
Well, I have siblings and other relatives. We've been throughout the district pretty much. So we went to Orion. There's some from Kennedy, Hoover, Fair Oaks. Name it. So it's, it's a tough choice to make those decisions. And one of the things I, myself and my family really value is that choice, having to make that choice. And I think that it's a good thing that we're pausing to incorporate some of these thoughts. Sometimes we need to get things done and as Lisa said, we make policy and don't realize that, I'm going to use David over there, that where David is sitting, it looks a little different than from where I'm sitting. So sometimes we need to have that perspective and vice versa. So I personally can tell you that none of the intentions was to make you feel discriminated or excluded. Quite the opposite is about inclusion, is about giving everyone a chance and to do what's best for each and every student. I was one of those parents who wanted to send my children to one of those schools of choice, but the waitlist were so long. So I went to my neighborhood school with my children. We were very happy. And again, it's just a matter of giving them a chance, working, being in there. And not everyone will be happy. That's just the way things are. And sometimes children, you know, it's hard when they're that little, trying to make those decisions, but you do your best. And one of the things, you know, about the superintendent's exception here is just that, that sometimes it just doesn't work. So that was the intent behind that. And I too am an immigrant. And I can tell you that my mother, who didn't speak English as well and had an accent, would have been knocking at Dr. Baker's door and with me by my side, telling him exactly what she wanted for her children. So I hope that other parents in the district feel that they can approach him and ask and advocate for their children. And with that, let's move on to the next item. Thank you all for coming. See, moving on to 12.6 recommendation, second reading and approval of board policy 5117 inter-district attendance. Were you guys pulling that one too or no?
No, no.
Okay. So I was just going to state different than the previous board policy that was just discussed. This particular inter-district transfer addresses the processes for students interested in coming into our district and potentially exiting our district to go to another district. However, recognizing at this time, we're currently not accepting inter-district transfers. Are there any questions?
I'll just add a comment that, that, that policy change there about not accepting it is just bringing in a a decision that was explicitly made in, you know, March of 2020. And, you know, we, of course, we revisited it a bit last month. So of course it's appropriate to update the policy to reflect that decision, in my opinion.
Any other comments or questions? Lisa, do you have any comments or questions? I can't see you.
Thank you for asking. No, I was going to basically say what Mike said is this, this policy is important to bring forward because it will actually put in place formally what we're actually doing. And so, and it doesn't, it doesn't impact the various comments we heard tonight. Yeah, we, I mean, yeah. So anyway, I'll make a motion to approve this. It is a second reading and I don't think we have, do we have any comments from the public on this? I think they mostly were interested in intra-district. Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call Ellie.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locke.
Aye.
Moving on to 12.7 recommendation regarding Creative Learning Center and PS Inc. Acknowledgement of Conversion and Consent to Change Ownership.
Yes, you know, the previous Orion property is already leased to CLC. But CLC has now sold their, their, their name. And it's now going under another name. So we wanted to make sure that we had everything legally in place and brought before you so that you understand CLC will still be there and doing their same work with those children with autism. But it no longer will be under, under the ownership of the person that we signed the lease agreement with. That person still works in, in capacity as before, but now it's under new ownership. And we had our attorneys look and develop the lease agreement and had all parties sign it. And nothing was changed from the additional content that we had previously with CLC.
Any comments or questions? No? Lisa, are you okay?
She's up.
Good, thanks.
Yes, yes.
Have a motion to move this item?
So moved. Oh, I'll second it.
Roll call Ellie.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locke.
Aye.
I don't have anything for this week, but last week I forgot that I had attended the LCAP meeting on the 25th. And of course, I don't have to report on it because we're going to hear much more about it later.
Let's see, I attended the North Star Forward Committee. Julia was there too. And then Dr. Baker and Wendy and I had an RCTA climate committee meeting. And then finally, Dr. Baker and Lisa and I met for the policy committee to discuss tonight's meeting.
And again, the only thing I have to report is an Orsor committee as well.
Lisa?
Yeah. So in addition to the policy committee, I also attended the 17th District PTA Founder's Event last night. And that's where Peter Fortenbaugh from the Boys and Girls Club was honored and it was really very nice. They kind of went over how he's taken the Boys and Girls Club from where it was 20 years ago to where it is now. And it's pretty impressive as we all know, he's been such a strong supporter of our schools and our kids. And then they also honored Carol Groom as a lifetime achievement award, or I guess there's a new politician award for political service for education. Anyway, it's a very nice event. And of course, Dennis and Laurie were superstars on it. Our former colleague Dennis. All right, that's it for me.
Don't have any additional ones? John?
The only additional one that I have is I attended the executive meeting for the Redwood City together. This, you know, I'm going to have them come and do a report to the board and I'll have to work with Ellie to see what board meeting we could have that report.
So on to information items 14.1, 2022 Supplement to the Annual Update of the 2021-22 Local Control Accountability Plan. So on to information, uh, items, uh, 14.1, 2022 Supplement to the Annual Update of the 2021-22 Local Control Accountability Plan. Oh, it's got the budget overview for parents. Okay.
A little bit of everything. Yeah. First in a series of many more of these plans to come your way. Um, I want to see if I can my own slides here. Okay, so in the past, there has always been an annual update, part of the LCAP. But it was always included as part of the final LCAP that you would see in June. So we have the good fortune of being asked to produce uh a mid-year update to give you information, which I think is important. All of this stuff makes sense. It's just that it's a lot, right? But it's to give you information about where we are up to this point in our expenditures as well as in our metrics. How are we doing on the LCAP actions and services that we proposed um last June? So um, this is a requirement as of Assembly Bill 130 that asks us to produce this. And there's a particular document that is attached that we needed to use. Um, that's the 2021-22 LCAP supplement. But we were also asked to produce the outcome data as well as the the expenditure data. And we used um optional format that D T S provided for us. So that's that much bigger one that we felt provided a lot more transparency for you in terms of what we were actually spending and what our metrics were and what we were actually doing up to this point. So um, hopefully you had a chance to take a look at that. There we go. So the budget overview for parents, there was no required format for that. And so we are just providing you with this update of information. There is an increase in some of the funding that we received, mostly from state and um local funds. And that is broken down in this way. So the state funds approximately uh $2 million more dollars have come in for the Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant, which you haven't seen yet. This is the one that we're working on with our partners to um increase the amount of time that students have access to care on site. So we're working with the Boys and Girls Club as well as Reach as well as PAL to develop a nine-hour day for the students, um if they want it, that will go until six o'clock at night, including more time in summer school, nine hours during the summer day and six weeks of summer school. So you'll be receiving all of that information when we finish that plan, which um hopefully will be by next month. And then we can start um spending that money. We can't spend the money until we actually write the plan. Then there is additional funding that came through for ACES and 21st Century Grants that also support the after-school program. And so it's been really um a lot of fun to work with the Boys and Girls Club and Reach and PAL to really say, you've got some money. What, what can we do with this? There is an expectation, again, just giving you like a, a preview of what's to come, that we focus on TK through six as well as make sure that we're including our special ed students. So we're also working with Patricia Polino and the Special Ed Department to see how we can bring some of our students who have not been included in these programs before into the after-school program. And so that's part of that funding. We have the Educator Effectiveness Grant, which you did see where we will be adding some additional staff in our staff development team for next year with different areas of focus, as well as we received a C T E grant, uh, Career Tech Grant that is being used and managed by Suba Marty at Kennedy, a fantastic middle school that we have with amazing electives. Um, and many of them around the, the C T E pathway. And so we can give you a report about that too, if that's something that you're interested in hearing about. And then, of course, you've got um ongoing local donations. And so there's an increase in that amount as well. So what we did, um, part of, uh, as always, um, there's an expectation that there be stakeholder engagement. And the stakeholder engagement is now called educating, um, engaging your educational partners. So I have to, we make that transition in language. And as you said, that there are a couple of you who joined us um at that meeting on January 25th, where we brought together teachers, classified community members, we had self-love representation, we had county office representation to take a look at the, the metrics, to take a look at the expenditures up to this point. And to make some recommendations about what might we be able to do still with that additional funding between now and the end of the year? And what we might start thinking about as we develop our LCAP for next year in our carryover. And so we brought people together and spent um a couple of hours looking at, what's that? Why is that doing that? What's happening? There we go. Um, as always, everything that we're doing with the LCAP and all of these plans are are founded in equity and the work that has been taking place in our district for the past several years, but with a particular focus from last year and with um the the mission and the vision that was adopted by the board as our guiding principles. And so we bring that forward in every meeting that we have where we're talking about making decisions and plans because it all needs to be rooted in equity. So our, our meeting was in English and in Spanish because we have Spanish-speaking people participating as well. And so this is just a couple of slides from that meeting. I don't know what I'm doing wrong here. There you go. And of course, we're focusing on the implementation of the framework that supports all students, which is the M T S S framework. And so we brought that information back as our, um, the way that we are operationalizing equity. And so we talked to the group about that. This is just an initial puzzle piece. Um, we also brought back our LCAP goals as a reminder to the group. And so as a reminder to the group here that um we talked about M T S S and the tiered systems of supports as being goal number one that's in the LCAP. Goal number two is about reclassification of our English learners. And goal number three is about achievement in reading and math and the acceleration as needed of those two subjects. If I quit that, I don't go. No. So what you have is the, um, the large version of the format that shows the metrics for each of those goals. Each one of those goals has um metrics, many of which were required by the state and some were voluntary on our part. And so it gives information. This is just one snapshot. And if there are members of the audience, the two people who are sitting here, if you'd like a copy of this, just let me know. I'd be happy to give you a copy. The um information about where we want to be at the end of three years, because as you remember, the LCAP is a three-year plan. But where we are so far in the mid-year of this first year. And so we have that information for each of the metrics that we were able to collect information. Not all the metrics have information yet in the middle of the year. So we have that as part of the plan. And then for each action, we gave an update as to how much had been spent up to this point. And I really have to thank Maria in our business office who went through every single one of these items with support from our office assistant, Sarah Aguilar, who spent, I can't tell you how much time going through all of the financial 2000 formats that they need to find to be able to track these funding sources. And so this is very accurate data up to this point. And of course, one of the things that we found is that uh, there's a number of these items that we haven't been able to implement. Largely because we have, we weren't able to hire some of the staff that we wanted to hire. In addition, um, the professional development that we had planned, we haven't been able to really enact because we haven't been able to get substitutes to provide release time for teachers. People have been somewhat reluctant to come after school for training because people are tired. There's been some illnesses that have passed through the community. And so people have been gone for periods of time. And so what we're working with is looking at how to um make up some of our PD time. Uh, once again, probably at the beginning of the year, next year, with the hope that um we'll have substitutes available and we can do some release time for teachers and develop some um professional communities. But again, a lot of that sort of remains to be seen. But we took a look at what had been the actions and services that we have been able to implement and what are the ones that we may need to carry over and try to do a stronger implementation next year. Um, so we then broke into subcommittees, which is, we like to do a lot on Zoom calls. And then took a look at the separate goals, looked at the actions and services, looked at the metrics and made some recommendations about the funds that had not yet been spent or the actions that had not yet been completed. What might we do? What might we do between now and the end of this year? What might we think about doing for next year? If we can't do some of these things this year, what might we prioritize as we start to write our LCAP again, probably starting in March for next year. And so to begin that community input into actions and services and priorities for next year based on our three LCAP goals. And so the three subcommittees worked on that and then came back together, brought their recommendations and shared with the large group. And their recommendations were these, um, to continue to support the community schools and the family centers. And we're doing that this year. And not only is that the support of the people in it, but it's also the support of some of the physical setup of those community centers. And so we've been um working on that. We're looking at providing additional reading materials to support the English learners in their reading. Because as you saw, when we looked at the iReady data a couple of weeks ago, we saw that that is a, a group that really needs to have some acceleration. And so we've been drilling down into what are the areas for the English learners that need some additional support that our current benchmark reading series hasn't been providing enough um specific instruction around. And so we've got our reading specialists at the different school sites who are working with us on that and trying some different materials and then working with the teachers at their site to, to, it's not really a pilot, but you know, to, to try out some of these materials. A lot of it has to do with specific reading skills, some phonological awareness and phonics kinds of things. For next year, we're considering, these were some of the recommendations again. So we're considering adding teachers at, at certain sites to be able to push in to the school, into the classrooms to be able to lower class size and do small group work in that way. We know that there aren't additional spaces available for teachers to have low class size in, in that way. We, we, we took a look at all of the facilities to see if there were rooms available for additional classes at um our priority schools. And there aren't too many extra spaces. And so we thought, well, maybe we can get people to push in. And so we talked about that, potentially additional instructional assistance, also at the targeted school size to push in, possibly doing some before, after-school tutoring, um, and then again, working with our school partners. Um, and so we are meeting with site administrators to discuss their site needs, um aligned with their SIPSAs, which are aligned with their LCAPs. Um, we will be starting the LCAP committee work where we'll bring forward all of this information um and get started with that again. And then as part of the expectation for the LCAP and the funding that has been coming, we need to make sure that all of the plans that are being written are aligned so that we're not just doing things haphazardly. But then in fact, it's, it's aligned um with our, with our priorities, our goals and our, our system work that we're doing. So those are all the things that we're working on. And that's, if you have any questions.
Liz, could you, I, for the audience, for members that are in the audience, we have to how the, this funding is for those students who are unduplicated students. So we're talking about those students who are E Ls. We're talking about those students who are foster U. We're talking about the students who are, I'm sorry.
Low income.
I was gonna, yeah, low income. And then also our special needs students also is included.
So they're not considered unduplicated pupils, but they are expected to be a priority. Yeah.
Because I, I attended a, um, a, a meeting with superintendents throughout the state of California. Where, and there, the topic was expanded learning opportunities. And what everybody was can really concerned about, yes, you're getting these dollars for these unduplicated students. But everyone is having difficulty trying to find the staff to provide the services. And in this one superintendent where she is located for expanding the day like to those nine hours, she's using like 4H to come in and and do stuff with them. And then another superintendent was, was um partnering with a college that has an ag program and bringing those students in. So it's, it's up for grabs of, I guess, how we can extend the, the, the day for nine hours. So whatever the, whatever partners we could get.
Well, and we're super fortunate that we have partnerships that we can build on. And so we've been, like I said, we've been meeting with Reach, PAL and the Boys and Girls Club. And they're up to the challenge, right? And so we've given them information about the numbers of students at each school site that need to be served first.
Right.
And it's within their capacity to do this if they hire a few more people with this additional funding. They're looking at A M P M kinds of shifts and different things as well as, as they offer electives, which is a program that we have right now with PAL over at TAFT. Hiring that they hire outside groups that come in and teach music, teach drama, you know, drumming, the different kinds of things that they, they're hiring experts to come teach some classes. And so they're very excited about this. And so I think we have kind of a, a step up in terms of what some districts are, are taking a look at because we already have very strong partnerships.
And then it's, it's opened up to other students once we offered it.
Yes.
To our unduplicated students, correct?
We need to, we need to serve um 2,600 unduplicated pupils. And once, once we've done that, then we can open it up to others. Yeah, there's a formula as, as, yeah, always.
Good, thank you.
Can I say, they're called unduplicated pupils because um several of the students may qualify for more than one of these categories. So they might be English learner and they might be low income. But they're only counted once in this count that it um is kind of the the foundation for the funding that we receive for many of these grants. So they're unduplicated.
Any questions or comments for Liz?
Are we, um, are we allowed to ask questions about that extended care? Or do you want us to wait for the, until it comes back to present?
There's gonna be a lot coming.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay. Yeah. Only, only because in some of the emails that we got around the policy one, people were mentioning about the alignment of TK and extended day and whether that was going to align up. And so
I, I have so much that I can tell you about that.
I'm looking forward to it. Yes. No, 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 I'm looking forward to it. It was due at the right time.
There's a trailer built.
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's awesome.
TK plan also, right? So there's the extended learning and the TK plan. They also need to overlap.
Okay, cool, cool. That's great. Um, uh, the uh, thank you for putting this together. And Maria, um, you answered some of the questions that I had. And one of the things that, that, that I noticed was that you know, the, the funding but update, and I'm just sharing this for the board members, or anybody else that's looking at it, the funding update. You, you sometimes doesn't match where the uh program actually is. The best example I can find is E S S implementation. Um, it shows that we spent $0 on it and yet the program's running. And that's purely just because we haven't been invoiced. And I sent these couple of questions to Liz and Maria came back with a detailed breakdown of how it's been spending. And, and that was great to see that those programs are still, that they're going through and um putting that in. I forgot what the other ones, mental health counselors. Of course, we knew they were there, but the funding didn't quite match the, the rate of spend. So um, many of the places where it looks like the, the actions and you're sitting there saying like, no, no, we've talked about this in board meetings. They're really happening. Um, so I was glad to hear about that. I love that every effort's been made. Um, and this came in the summary to bring together the funding sources into the LCAP because we often talk about funding sources here and like it becomes very difficult to see the overall impact. So um, I, I love that that's in there and that was mentioned. 60 teachers expressing interest in tutoring for after-school. Um, that's going to be amazing when that gets implemented. And I thought that was something in the update to really celebrate. And so is that going to be online, by the way, or would that be in person?
No, it's in person.
Yeah, so.
Twelve teachers have started this week.
Yeah, that's so great to be able to offer that because, I mean, I know we are, we're partnering with online tutoring as well, but there's, there, I don't know, there's just something about being in person. Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's basically the studies I've, I've been hearing too, is that they're finding that, yeah, online tutoring's not as good. So 60, I mean, that's, that's incredible. And uh, you know, and of course, the community schools, right? Like they came this year. Um, and you know, we, we knew that was there, but of course, rereading that in the update um was wonderful. Uh, and the professional development, um, you know, it's, I get it. I get that it's hard to put it in and without the substitutes and put it in. It was a little sad to see that U D L gets postponed till next year. Um, at least it's just postponed. Um, I know that there are a lot of programs and a lot of things that we're trying to bring to the district for it. So we'll look forward to an update on that and I guess in August. Um, so thanks for putting together the update.
Um, so one of the things that you mentioned about reading specialist and that sometimes, I know I just wrote like skills. I, I guess they find that students are lacking skills. I'm just wondering if, just for clarification, if that is the case. And if so, does the reading specialist then communicate with the teacher? The teacher then communicates that to the parents so that they are aware of what's happening at the school level?
So in the perfect world, everybody's So in the perfect world, everybody's communicating that with each other. And so what we've started doing is we meet monthly with the reading specialists. And then we talk to them about what we see in the data, and about what some of our thoughts are, and what some resources are, and some of the research that we've done. And then they weigh in on that, because they're the reading specialists. And so they give us information back about what they might want to try, and what they, what they think about, you know, some of the different programs, and the different resources that we've shown them. And so different reading specialists are trying some different things. And then they are bringing that information back, sharing it with different teachers. And then the teachers have that same information as well, because what we're using is the iReady information. And they are able to share that information with parents. And then what we're, what we've also provided to each teacher is a list of activities that parents can do at home, that they can give to their parents, of things that they can practice with their kids at home, in English and in Spanish as well. So what the iReady result showed us is that for many children, at many grade levels, the phonics was weak, right? And so what we know about the reading series that we have is that it doesn't do a very good job of teaching phonics. So without being able to break apart words, and that has an impact on their comprehension, and has an impact on their joy for reading, and, you know, so we're looking to see how we can kind of tackle that without just drill and kill phonics stuff, right? And so there are, there are ways to do that, and there are materials to do that. And we're focusing actually on grades three and up, because, you know, little guys are still learning it. But if you've gone into third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, and you don't have some good phonics skills, then reading your texts and reading anything is going to be difficult. And so we're looking at grade level appropriate, interesting, easier to read books that work on particular skills that teachers can use in small groups with their students. It's not a whole group kind of thing. It's more of a small group, or the tutors might be able to use it in their after-school tutoring.
Elisa, do you have any questions or comments?
Just, I wanted to say thank you so much, and all the staff and parents and everybody who's been a part of the LCAP committee. There's a lot of work that goes into this. So thank you very much. No questions for me. As I sit on the committee, I got a lot of stuff answered during that time period. So thank you.
And same here, Liz. Thank you to you and your staff, and to my colleagues who sit on the committee, and to everyone that participates. Great work. Thanks. 14.2, River City School District Review of Connect Community Charter Schools Audit Report for Fiscal Year 2020 to 21. Any comments or questions? None? Okay. 14.3, Redwood City School District Review of KIP Excellence Community Prep Audit Report for Fiscal Year 2020-21. Consequences? No? And 14.4, River City School District Review of Rocketship Redwood City Preps Audit Report for Fiscal Year 2020-21. No comments or questions? I just want to say thank you to Priscilla and her staff for doing all the work of reviewing all these documents and making sure everything is okay. Now on to correspondence.
Just a lot of emails around the intradistrict transfer policy.
Yeah, I also got some on the food services. So, okay, moving on to 16.1, possible other business or suggested items for future agendas?
Just the Redwood City Together, and then you're going to have a report from Stanford on the Adelant, the Spanish immersion program, Adelant de Selvi. It'll be coming on March, I think it's 29th. Is that what we decided? 20-something, it's a 20-something, the one right before the break, I think.
That'd be very interesting.
Yeah, it's an outstanding report. I mean, it's being published right now. I was just looking at the, doing a bit of editing with names on it. March, yeah, March, March the 23rd. That's it, that's it.
Okay, and 17.1, oops, sorry.
Oh, oh, actually, no, actually, maybe this is the board agenda schedule. Sorry, I had, go ahead, Maria. I think my question is on the next one.
Okay, changes to the board agenda schedule?
I just had a question, if we were still having a special meeting on, I think it was Monday, February 28. I think that was going to be for the feasibility study, but I'm thinking now that that's just going to be at a regular meeting. But if you could confirm if we still need that special meeting. I have something on my calendar, and I haven't heard anything since.
All right, I'll check. That was a feasibility study on the 28th. And I know
Yeah.
at least they started, they started this, you know, the survey's already started. It's already started, the feasibility study. It's already started. So I can check, I can check with them and see if they still need that or not.
Okay. Yeah, just, just let us know. And then I wanted to make sure everybody else, we had that on our calendar in case we need it. But I think the latest thinking was it would just come to us in March, but maybe not. Maybe it'll be ready by then.
Yeah, I was thinking it's the first board meeting in March now.
Oh, okay, okay.
But I'll double check. I will double check.
Thanks.
Okay, no more changes on that item. So can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? And Ellie, would you do the honors?
trustee McAvoy?
Aye.
trustee Wells?
Aye.
trustee Lawson?
Aye.
vice president Marcus?
Aye.
president here, Salkum?
Aye. Thank you, everybody. Good night, Lisa.
Good night. Thank you very much. Good meeting.